Good evening. The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the Keene City Council. This meeting is being broadcast live on the City of Keene YouTube channel and Spectrum Channel 1302. The video is also streamed on the city's website and is posted by the end of the next business day barring any technical difficulties. If you would like to receive an electronic City Council packet to reference while viewing future broadcasts, please contact the City Clerk's office during business hours or go to the city's website and subscribe to the city meetings email list. The agenda is also accessible from any mobile device. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kate M. Bosley.
Laura E. Tobin.
Here.
Michael J. Remmy.
Here.
Randy L. Filio.
Here.
Robert C. Williams.
Here.
Edward J. Haas.
Here.
Philip M. Jones.
Present.
Andrew M. Madison.
Here.
Chris E. Roberts.
Here.
Jacob R. Favalis.
Here.
Brian J. Lake.
Here.
Catherine I. Workman.
Here.
Bettina A. Chadbourne.
Here.
Thomas F. Powers.
Here.
Mitchell H. Greenwald.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Greenwald has requested to be participating remotely. And Counselor Greenwald, would you state the reason for your request?
I am away on a family vacation. I am outside Vancouver and there's no one else in the room with me.
Thank you, Counselor. Any objections to Counselor Greenwald participating in this evening's meeting? Counselor Roberts?
Mr. Your Honor, the...
I feel this violates the intent, the reason we had this. If a person with sickness or whatever, if I decide to go on a family vacation, like I went down Georgia last week, the last month, to go to my grandson's wedding, that was my choice and I made that choice over being here. And so, we're just spreading out the number of reasons why we can't have it. Do we have it back on another cruise? We have it on train. We've been having a number of these different reasons that are personal choices, not things that are unforeseen.
Hearing the challenge, we've done this before and I understand your point, Counselor. Going to ask for a show of hands.
I'll have to do a roll call.
Do a roll call for this?
Yes.
Yes?
Yep.
All right. Would the clerk, any other comments?
Which way do you, a yes is what?
A yes is to allow, I believe.
Yes.
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 Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remmy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
No.
Counselor Favalis?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
No.
Counselor Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Okay, yes.
Okay.
And so Mitch, you're good. I'd like to recognize now Counselor Filio to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Counselor Powers for a motion to adopt the minutes of our previous meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to accept the minutes of the June 5th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Seconded by Counselor Filio, any comments or corrections to the minutes of our June 5th meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor?
It's going to be a roll call, isn't it?
Yes.
It will be. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, everything is a roll call.
Yeah. Thanks, Mitch.
It's usually me.
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remmy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalis?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries fourteen to nothing. Few announcements. Happy Juneteenth today, June 19th, our sixth celebration of this national holiday, of the state holiday, fourth celebration of our, fifth of our national holiday. I want to thank our Human Rights Committee for having organized the celebration on Central Square. You've got some great entertainment out there and it looks like the crowd was building over the night, so good job and thank you for leading that. Kat is a member of, I'm sorry, Counselor Workman is a member of that committee. Okay, speaking of the square, remind folks that the concerts on the Commons are going to begin on July 2nd and continue through into August, so if you wish further information on that, please consult keenparks.com. I just want to give a quick update. You know that as of January of '24, I along with Steve Fortier of the New Hampshire Business and Economic Affairs have been convening the Keene Area Manufacturing Association. By virtue of getting more people engaged in that, we were invited by the New Hampshire Tech Alliance, a statewide organization, to be presenters at the Northeast National Security Conference, and we did that along with Jim Crowley from Keene State College, Samrad Bukhavan from Moore Nanotechnology, and John Solomonides from Soldier Systems in Gilson. And the conference was at St. Anselm's College. It was a great opportunity to showcase the optics manufacturing ecosystem that exists in this region. And, yeah, it was very well received, but it's that kind of outreach that we're getting. And I thought you'd want to know that it's working. The last line that I offered there is the optics industry is to Keene, what the biofab industry is to Manchester, and both are key to the future of the state of New Hampshire. Okay. The Jumanji Festival, the 30th anniversary celebration, is taking place this weekend. There's going to be a screening of the film on June 20th at 6:00 PM at the Colonial Theater, so do try to get tickets in advance. There'll also be events downtown on Saturday, June 21st, including a costume-themed road race on Main Street at noon, followed by a parade at 12:30. And then there'll be a scavenger hunt on Sunday, and that'll take place between noon and four, with the scavenger hunt and the closing ceremony will take place on Central Square at the gazebo. And a reminder about our summer vacation schedule, it will begin to kick in on July 3rd when we will have canceled the City Council meeting for that evening in deference to Independence Day Eve. Other meetings in July will continue to meet as usual effective August 7th. The City Council meeting is canceled, as are the meetings that occur on August 13th and 14th of PLD and Finance, the Planning License and Development Committee, and the Finance Operations and Personnel Committee. Council will resume its regular schedule on August 21st of 2025. I'd like to recognize Counselor Powers for an announcement.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is really for the benefit of the viewing audience. I know most of the City Councilors and members of the staff know what the line of events is tomorrow for Lieutenant Cooper's funeral. And to the community, I want to say thank you on behalf of the department for all the support we've gotten, from individuals to businesses, to folks you'd never think of just stepping up and being able to help out. It's appreciated. It's been very helpful to get through tomorrow and all the parts that have to go together. Also want to say we're sorry for the inconvenience that it may cause for an hour, an hour and a half, because it'll be very active downtown. You'll have to find a different way to sort of travel around or just stand and watch what's going on. We very much appreciate it. Also want to say to you that if you see this evening, anytime now, over the next day, a Berlin fire truck or a Manchester fire truck taking one of their calls, not get too concerned. Members of 10 communities and agencies in this state have come to Keene over the course of the next 36 to 48 hours to cover, so rest assured, you call for help, you're going to get it. Thanks for all your support.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. And I'd like to invite, it may get warm in the room given the weather outside. If folks feel uncomfortable, wish to take off sport jackets, feel free to do so. Okay, I, at this point, while we have a break in the action, so just want to invite that tonight, we're going to be recognizing the Savings Bank of Walpole. It is their 150th year in operation, and they'll be celebrating throughout this year. If you recall walking into the Savings Bank, you'll see a sign in there and says, "We put the community in banking." And community banking has been their focus for 150 years, effective July 2nd of this year. So to honor their 150 years, their president, Mark Bowden, who I'll ask to come up and join me in a moment, he has challenged his staff to perform 150 good deeds in the course of the year. And you can find a list of those good deeds that he's publishing on the Savings Bank of Walpole website. And they won't have any trouble filling this up. Mark, as part of his community engagement, chairs the Menanoc Diversity, oh, he's a member of, because you're, who's the chair of, I mean, you're the chair, and he's a member of the Menanoc Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee and the treasurer at the Cheshire Medical Center. Dominic Perkins, who many of you will know is a member of Southwest, Southeastern, Southwestern Community Services Board, I'm only on that one. Kristin Noonan is a member of the Menanoc Regional School District, United Way Board of Directors. Daniel Ruffo is a member of the Kids Collaborative and the Cheshire Health Foundation Board. Andrew Richardson is a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not going to go, keep going on. There are 100 staff at the Savings Bank of Walpole, and about a third of those staff members are actively engaged in some organization and board in our community. With Mark tonight is Greg Tewksbury, who is the president of New Hampshire Bancorp. It's an organization formed in 2018 that Greg moved from his presidency at Savings Bank to assume the role of president of the New Hampshire Mutual Bancorp. And with them tonight is Jason Houston, the chairman of the Board of Savings Bank of Walpole. So I'd like to invite Mark to come up and use the mic up here to give us a couple of words. Okay, do it from the table. It's much, maybe it's more convenient. Anyway, welcome, Mark. Congratulations on the 150-year celebration.
Thanks for the kind words, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the council for giving us a couple of minutes. I know you have a really busy schedule today, so I'll be uncharacteristically brief here. So we've been around for 150 years now, and I can tell you for sure that every single day of those 150 years, we've been doing nothing but serving the financial needs and community needs of this region. You know, we don't, our board meetings, this is what we talk about. We talk about this region. And for those of you that don't have a scope and think of us maybe still as this little bank, we now have seven branches, all in Cheshire County. So while others are leaving, including somebody who left this week in Keene, you know, we've opened two branches, you know, in the last few years. We think that's just who we are and what we need to do. And in terms of size, I mean, we have, as Jay said, about 100 employees here. We have 24,000 customers. So you think of the size of the region, 24,000 of those customers are with us. They have $800 million entrusted to our bank. So we manage $800 million of other people's money every day. And, you know, in terms of the needs of the community, you know, big banks really don't serve, you know, small businesses in rural towns. And we, we close over $100 million of loans every single year, you know, split between businesses and individuals. So, you know, I'm kind of, I'm really proud, you know, of what we do just as a bank, you know, and just strictly as a bank, but I think we're so much more than that. You know, we've become, what I think, and people tell us, is a community institution. We hear SBW is everywhere, all the time. And that's part of our business model. You know, we purposely, we have a community engagement function. We have three people, you know, in community engagement. And I've had people come to me and recently ask, "So do you have full-time staff that do nothing but volunteer?" Because we see you everywhere. And I was like, "I actually don't understand what you're asking," but, but we give, we give staff unlimited time, you know, to be involved in the community. We think there's no more important thing that we can do than, than make sure that we're on. Basically, and Jay was asking me, "So what boards are people?" And I said, "Just name an organization." And I'm pretty sure we have somebody who's on the board or was on the board, you know, in the last year or two. So, but not only is, is it our business model, being involved in the community and engaging, which is purposely said that way, it's in our DNA. I mean, it's who we are from the very beginning. We've gone back to the original charter of the bank, and it was people in Walpole who, you know, said, "We need to take care of people. We need to, you know, big banks aren't giving us any place to save." Then they literally were burying their money, you know, and hiding it under floorboards. And, you know, those same values that were created then are still here. And, and one of the reasons we haven't changed in 150 years is that we're a mutual bank. And for those that don't know what that means is, we don't have outside shareholders or owners. We're owned by our community. So we don't have an incentive, you know, to run away, and that's why, you know, under Greg's leadership, you know, we're part of a mutual holding company with banks that are like-minded. And we're our own business still, we're our own bank. We get, you know, we have our own charter. So, you know, that has worked out really well. And for the 150th celebration, you know, we said we're going to do it the SBW way, which is not to throw ourselves a big party. You know, it's to work with partners. And hopefully everybody's seen next Saturday, there's a big event with the Swamp Bats. We're doing it, it's free admission for everybody, lots of kids, activities, and it's going to, and we have like 25 to 30 nonprofits that are going to be there tabling, and, and we have incentives for people to engage with them. So we're doing it the SBW way. And one challenge I'll put out to council and to the city is, take a look at our website, and I'll send something to, for people hopefully to distribute, is come up. We're soliciting good deeds. So we're looking for ideas. There was a nine-year-old in Winchester who had the idea for a blanket drive. And we brought him in and we just did it, and we collected so many blankets because of this, this one kid's idea. So I really welcome every one of you, or even collectively, to come up, you know, with a suggestion, you know, of good deeds for organizations that are important to you, whether it's the fire department or, or an organization that's close to you or your kid's school, you know, look at it and, and, you know, submit it, and answer, we'll get to it. So I guess that's our, our challenge, all of you. So, yeah, we appreciate, we appreciate the love that we get from our community every day.
Thanks for joining us tonight, Greg, Jason, Mark. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And if any City Councilors would want to join me, we're going to do a proclamation on behalf of the city on the day of your 150th anniversary at City Hall at 9:00 AM. Okay, thank you, folks. All right. Would the clerk please take us to appointments?
I certainly will. We have nominations to the Library Board of Trustees and Energy and Climate Committee. And to the library board, we have Holly Seeler being reappointed for a term to expire June 30th, 2028, and Pam Russell Slack is also being reappointed for a term to expire June 30, 2028. And then we have a new member to Energy and Climate Committee. Her name is Catherine Coning, and she would be serving as an alternate, term to expire December 31, 2026.
And we will table those nominations till our next regular meeting, as is our practice. We have a couple of confirmations that were tabled last meeting?
Yes, we have a confirmation.
Well, we have one.
We have one, yes. A confirmation to the trustees of trust funds and cemetery trustees. And this is for Andrew Royce, who will be serving as a regular member for a term to expire December 31, 2027.
Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to confirm the nomination.
Seconded by Counselor Filio, any comments on the nomination? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remmy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalis?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. If you're following in an agenda or online, we're moving to item C1, Communications.
And our first communication is from Let It Shine, and this is their annual request to conduct the 2025 Pumpkin Festival on October 18th, 2025.
And this request will be forwarded to the Planning Licenses and Development Committees
This is a communication from the president of Keene Pride, Adam Topher, and along with it is a petition with 785 signatures, and it requests the city to designate Keene a sanctuary city for the LGBTQ community.
And we will refer this to the Planning, Licenses and Development Committee's July meeting.
And next we have, are we ready?
I'm ready.
We're ready, okay. And next we have a communication from the United Church of Christ, and this is a letter of support for the petition that has been submitted by Keene Pride.
And we will accept the letter as informational, and we'll be sharing that back with PLD at their meeting.
Yes. And next we have a communication from Attorney Thomas R. Hannah, and he is from BCM Environmental Land Law, representing the Menadoc Conservancy, and this has to do with the city's contribution to the Menadoc Conservancy for Drainage Replacement Project at Zero Ash Wiellet Street.
This request letter will be shared with the, it's being referred to the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee. Okay, next. The next three items will read into the record, but they're going to be held, tabled until the budget considerations.
Yes. So we have three communications that have come in from city councilors requesting proposed amendments to the operating budget for FY 2026, and pursuant to Section 30 of the Rules of Order, those changes needed to be here by Tuesday at 4:00 PM. We have one from Counsel Remi related to the Arts Alive allocation in the budget and a corresponding change to the Keene Senior Center. The second is from Councilors Tobin and Williams, and this is related to the Arts Alive funding. And then Counsel Lake proposes several different amendments to outside agencies, and we will be tabling these.
Yep.
Next?
Next.
Next, we have a communication from Counsel Favelis, and he's requesting to place the que, a question related to Keno on the 2025 municipal general election ballot.
We'll refer this to Finance Organization and Personnel, but expect that a hearing on this needs to be held after we receive confirmation that the state has acted on some legislation that is in flow, but not yet signatured.
And next we have a communication from Counsel Haas, and this relates to the availability of the 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan online for public review, as well as suggestions related to continuity of operations planning for the city.
And we'll refer this letter to the city manager, and maybe she'll address that further in the, later in the meeting. Okay, we're moving on to Part D, Council Committee Reports.
Yes, and if we were going to read the first two together, there's no objection.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. So we have two licensing items coming out of PLD. The first is for the Keene Music Festival, request to use city property, and on a vote of four to zero, the Planning, Licenses and Development Committee recommends that the Keene Music Festival be granted a street license, street fair license to use downtown city rights of way, as well as use of downtown city property on Central Square, Railroad Square, and designated parking spaces on Main Street, to conduct the Keene Music Festival on Saturday, August 30th, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, with downtown merchant sidewalk sales permitted in locations where a minimum of six feet of clearance is maintained for pedestrian access. In addition, the applicant is permitted to close off a portion of Railroad Street from Main Street to Well Street, and a portion of Lamson Street from Main Street to Federal Street. This permission is granted subject to the following conditions: the signing of a revocable license and indemnification agreement, that the petitioner provide a certificate of liability insurance with the city of Keene listed as additional insured in the amount of $1 million, and submittal of signed letters of permission from any private property owners for the use of their property. In addition, the petitioner's granted use of the requested parking spaces free of charge under the provisions of the free parking policy. Said permission is granted subject to attainment of any necessary licenses or permits, and compliance with all laws, including attainment of any necessary licensing for the use of intellectual property, and compliance with any recommendations of staff. The petitioner agrees to absorb the cost of any city services over and above any amount of city funding allocated in the FY 2026 Community Events Budget, with said payment made within 30 days of the date of invoicing. And then we have a further report from the Planning, Licenses and Development Committee, and this is related to the Keene Elm City Rotary Club, request to use city property for the DeMar Marathon. And on a vote of four to zero, the Planning, Licenses and Development Committee recommends that the Elm City Rotary Club be granted permission to sponsor the Clarence DeMar Marathon on September 28th, 2025, subject to the signing of a revocable license and indemnification agreement, and submittal of a certificate of liability insurance in the amount of $1 million, listing the city of Keene as additional insured. This license is conditional upon the petitioner providing an adequate number of volunteer race marshals to ensure runner's safety along the course, and submittal of signed letters of permission from any private property owners for the use of their property. Said permission is granted subject to attainment of any necessary licenses or permits, and compliance with all laws, including attainment of any necessary licensing for the use of intellectual property, and compliance with any recommendations of staff. The petitioner agrees to absorb the cost of any city services over and above any amount of city funding allocated in the FY 26 Community Events Budget. Said payment shall be made within 30 days of the date of invoicing.
Any questions, comments from councilors on these two items?
Need a motion?
Sorry, recognize Counsel Jones for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the intent of the committee reports.
Second. Seconded by Counsel Williams. Counsel Jones, any comment for the committee?
Yeah, we'll keep this short since we're trying to condense here. But yes, we heard from both organizations at PLD, they've both been putting on the events for a number of years. Pablo Fleischman is like the music man of Keene, he does a great job. We're, we're proud of that event. And also the DeMar Marathon, which is recognized by Runners World as one of the top five marathons in New England. It's increasing, the footprint is the same, it's, but is increasing in activities, and congratulations to both, both of these activities.
Thank you, Counsel. Any comments and questions now? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Counsel Tobin?
Yes.
Counsel Remi?
Yes.
Counsel Philio?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Madison?
Yes.
Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Madison?
Yes.
Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
Counsel Favelis?
Yes.
Counsel Lake?
Yes.
Counsel Workman?
Yes.
Counsel Chadborne?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Move on to Request for a Transfer.
And this is a Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to the 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan, and on a vote of four to zero, the Planning, Licenses and Development Committee recommends the city council adopt the 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan, and that the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to execute the plan.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. If you saw this plan, you, you would see how detailed it is, and I want to thank Mr. Bloomquist for presenting it. I had the honor of seeing it twice, once at the Master, Master Plan Steering Committee and again at PLD. Some people call it the voice of doom and gloom, I call it the voice of preparation, which is truly what it is. And we will be taking these items that were presented to us and incorporating some into our master plan, and to some into future events happening with city council.
We're going to need you to make the motion.
I move the intent of the committee report.
Second. Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Williams.
I don't need to report again, do I?
No. Any questions, comments from councilors? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Counsel Tobin?
Yes.
Counsel Remi?
Yes.
Counsel Philio?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Madison?
Yes.
Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
Counsel Favelis?
Yes.
Counsel Lake?
Yes.
Counsel Workman?
Yes.
Counsel Chadborne?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Greenwald?
Yes.
We have a communication from...
Yes, we have, we had kept our public comment period open until last Tuesday, and we did receive one written public comment on the fiscal year operating budget 2025-26, and this is a Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report that accepted that those written comments from Cameron Tees in support of outside agency funding for the senior center as informational.
And we'll accept the report as informational. Moving on to item D8. And we'll take two items together here, D8 and 9.
Yes, we have two related items coming out of the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee. The first is a request to expend funds from the Community Development Department Personnel Line to purchase a software permitting platform. And on a voting, vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends that the city manager be authorized to expend $93,557 from fiscal year '25 Community Development Department Personnel Funds for the purchase of the OpenGov permitting software platform. And we have a second report, and this is a request to approve a change order for this project, and on a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends that the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to execute a change order to the existing contract the city has with OpenGov for the inclusion of a cloud permitting platform.
Recognize Counsel Powers for a motion on these two items.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to carry out the intent of the committee reports.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Remi, Counsel Powers for the committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. These are companion actions, and we're talking about OpenGov permitting software platform. This is going to be in the Community Development Department, and includes the fire marshal and the building inspector. And a lot of folks have been looking for this for a long time, and they spent, the department and all the folks involved spent a lot of time examining what's available to make that whole process easier. And I think waiting, studying it as much as they did was a wise, wise action, because they've come up with a really impress, in my opinion, an impressive operation, because it means if I want a permit, I don't have to come to City Hall. And that's what a lot of folks have been looking for. That's time. If you're in business, that's time and that's money, and it's tough enough to do business if you're, being involved with a lot of paperwork is very difficult. So what the department would like to do, do is use some funds that are existing in the current budget, this is not a new appropriation, and it's in the budget here at the end because there've been some vacancies in the department. So there's sufficient funding to make this purchase and get the program up and running. It's about a six-month project to get it implemented, but it also companion some of the work that's done at Public Works that's automated. So very well received by our committee, was unanimously accepted and sent to you for passage. I hope that you're going to be able to do that. The companion part of it is, now to get all the money, they're ready to purchase, we already have a, a relationship with OpenGov, and this would be a amendment to an open contract to purchase and implement the program. And pretty much it's a cloud solution, so once again, that's, that's the way to do business. I hope you will pass this unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. Any comments or questions from councilors? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Counsel Tobin?
Yes.
Counsel Remi?
Yes.
Counsel Philio?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Madison?
Yes.
Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
Counsel Favelis?
Yes.
Counsel Lake?
Yes.
Counsel Workman?
Yes.
Counsel Chadborne?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We move on to Request for a Transfer.
And this is a Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to the transfer of fiscal year 2025 funds to the ambulance CIP. And on a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends that the city manager be authorized to transfer available FY 2025 operating funds in the amount of $39,564 from the ambulance transfer grant fund to the FY 2025 Ambulance Replacement CIP Program CIP.
Counsel Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Remi, Counsel Powers for the committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. These are companion actions, and we're talking about OpenGov permitting software platform. This is going to be in the Community Development Department, and includes the fire marshal and the building inspector. And a lot of folks have been looking for this for a long time, and they spent, the department and all the folks involved spent a lot of time examining what's available to make that whole process easier. And I think waiting, studying it as much as they did was a wise, wise action, because they've come up with a really impress, in my opinion, an impressive operation, because it means if I want a permit, I don't have to come to City Hall. And that's what a lot of folks have been looking for. That's time. If you're in business, that's time and that's money, and it's tough enough to do business if you're, being involved with a lot of paperwork is very difficult. So what the department would like to do, do is use some funds that are existing in the current budget, this is not a new appropriation, and it's in the budget here at the year end because there've been some vacancies in the department. So there's sufficient funding to make this purchase and get the program up and running. It's about a six-month project to get it implemented, but it also companion some of the work that's done at Public Works that's audited. So very well received by our committee, was unanimously accepted and sent to you for passage. I hope that you're going to be able to do that. The companion part of it is, now to get all the money, they're ready to purchase, we already have a, a relationship with OpenGov, and this would be a amendment to an open contract to purchase and implement the program. And pretty much it's a cloud solution, so once again, that's, that's the way to do business. I hope you will pass this unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. Any comments or questions from councilors? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Counsel Tobin?
Yes.
Counsel Remi?
Yes.
Counsel Philio?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Madison?
Yes.
Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
Counsel Favelis?
Yes.
Counsel Lake?
Yes.
Counsel Workman?
Yes.
Counsel Chadborne?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Greenwald?
Yes.
Moving on to item D10.
And this is a Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to a LWCF Grant Round 36 Intent to Apply. And on a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends that the city manager be authorized to execute an intent to apply for LWCF Grant Round 36 for the Ash Wiellet Green Space Project.
That is the Land Water Conservation Fund. Counsel Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Remi, Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Andy Bohannon joined us to explain this action. This is a first step in a grant process. They'll bring some money through because our little project on Ash Wiellet Street that has some open space, part of which, when it transfers, the city will become the owner of a nice piece of property that we'd like to conserve. And in order to do that, to build it to where it should be, we need some funding. And we've had success in the past, and by being ready to fill the grant and, and go through the steps now, we're, we're so much better off, because sometimes these come very, very promising. And we'd like the city council to authorize the manager to file the report, or file the application intent. Thank you.
Comments or questions on the grant application? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the music series.
And this is a Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to the Levitt Music Series Grant Letter of Commitment. And on a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends acceptance of the withdrawal of the Levitt Music Series Grant project request for a letter of commitment.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant has asked it to be withdrawn, and this is the proper process to do, where we have to authorize that withdrawal. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I need to, I didn't ask for a motion, but we will need one.
Move to carry out the intent of the report.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Remy. Any further questions on this one? Seeing none.
Counselor...
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Tobin.
Sorry, just a quick comment. I just noticed in the backer notes it was made and motioned. The motion was made and sent by Counselor Remy.
We'll correct that. Thank you.
Okay. Motion.
Yes.
That we're voting on now.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item D twelve.
And this is a Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to an FAA grant for the airport taxiway A reconstruction project. And on a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends that the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to accept, execute, and expend grant funding for up to the amount of $3.3 million from the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program for the taxiway A reconstruction project.
Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is another Federal Aviation Administration grant to the city of Keene that helps us keep the airport in, in good order and continues to be very active down there. But if you don't have good taxiways and runways, you're in trouble. We have applied for, and we're in a position that's going to be coming along real quick, the funding $3.3 million for taxiway A improvements. And it's anticipated that it's moving along fairly quick, and the job could be, begin in August. It's federal, state, and local money. Our local money, it's already in the budget. It's been set aside for this project. Recommend that this be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
And moving on to item D thirteen.
And this is a Finance Organization and Personnel Committee report relative to an agreement for construction engineering services with Greenman Peterson for the Island Street Infrastructure Improvements Project. And on a vote of five to zero, the Finance Organization and Personnel Committee recommends that the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to execute an agreement with Greenman Peterson, Inc. for engineering services during construction as part of the Island Street Infrastructure Project's improvement, I'm sorry, improvements project, up to the aggregate amount of $250,000.
Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers.
This is the authorization to sign a contract with a engineering firm that we well know they're doing work for us currently. And it would behoove us to have the same engineer who's working in the city work on this particular project, because they'd be able to know more about what's happening on all of these construction projects. This is a significant project. It's the, it's the part that we've, two years now, I think, been trying to get bids that would come in within the budget process. And we now will have the money for Island Street. And that project is from Winchester Street Roundabout to West Street. It'll be a lot of subterranean work, sidewalks, curbs, new pavement. It will really, really pretty up that particular area. And this project also could get started in the very near future. The funds for the engineering firm is in the budget. So this, once again, is not a new, new appropriation this time. Recommend that we approve this. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
And the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the city manager's comments.
Just a few updates for you this evening. The Keene Public Library, we'll be sharing this more widely, but they are now offering public access to Grant Station. Grant Station is a resource for nonprofits, government agencies, and educational institutions that are seeking grants. It offers access to 150,000-plus funding profiles, 15,000 curated grants, as well as strategies and other tools for successful applications. I think this is going to be a welcome addition to the library for many of our nonprofits in the area. And also just an update related to the city's hazard mitigation plan that you voted on this evening. It will be posted to the city's website after adoption. It's currently on the Southwest Regional Planning Commission site in their news section, as they've been assisting with the preparation of the draft document. In addition, Court Blumpquist, who is serving as our emergency management director, has been assigned duties related to working with the departments to update continuation of operation plans as part of his fiscal '26 contract. Just something to get into your schedule. Community Night will be Tuesday, August 19th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. That's always a great evening down at the Public Works facility. We get a lot of equipment out there, and families come, and it's a wonderful time. So hopefully, you'll be able to attend. And then, as Counselor Powers already mentioned, we lost one of our own last week. Lieutenant Aaron Cooper passed away after a long and courageous battle with cancer. His loss is deeply felt by his family, friends, and colleagues, and the entire department. Tomorrow, Aaron will be laid to rest. For any city counselors who wish to attend the services, we recommend gathering at the City Hall lobby at 10:45 a.m. to join department heads and other staff. We will proceed together to the United Church of Christ to enter as a group immediately following our firefighters and their families. On behalf of the city, flowers have been sent both to the family and the service in honor of Aaron's memory and service. And that is all for me this evening.
Thank you, manager. Though the big thing coming from you and your staff is coming up.
Yeah.
The city's budget. And thank you for all that work that the city and you and your staff directors have put into it.
Yes.
And Counselor Powers, if you've still got, your knees aren't hurting too badly, we have an item before us tonight for a grant that is time-sensitive because of our own city calendar. When we are taking the, one council meeting break in July, this grant needs to be accepted before that time. So I'd like to recognize Counselor Powers for a motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a time-sensitive issue, so I would move to suspend Section 26 of the Rules of Order to act on the memorandum on the first reading list.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Filio. Would the clerk please call the roll? It's a take two-thirds vote.
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Powers, I'd like to introduce the motion.
I'd move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Second.
Think we're going to need some information.
Yeah.
Counselor Powers.
So I'm happy to see that the individual who is best versed in how to speak to this is almost at the microphone.
Thank you, Counselor. Paul Andrus, Community Development Director. Trying to keep this high level. This is, yes, it's a time-sensitive grant that was, we were originally approached by the local governments for Sustainability USA or ICLI USA for a grant to Planning and Capacity Program Development Grant, essentially to support green energy projects and initiatives in the, in the region. The goal is to, is to essentially build an effective coalition of partners that will attract capital and accelerate green, clean energy projects that are supported by the larger community. Again, it's not, well, specifically, it's, the request that was put in was for $135,245 to hire a consultant or perhaps a contract employee to work on a number of initiatives along with our core coalition partners. No guarantees here. Obviously, the original, as background, the original funding source was clawed back, as many of our federal dollars have been. And this is just a, we had received a notice that there's potential for us to receive a grant. So with all the timing involved, we wanted to get this preapproval from you all. So with that, I will endeavor to answer any questions.
Hey, Counselor Favaleese.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real briefly, because I know that we're, we have a lot more to get through tonight, but I wonder if the Community Development Director could offer an example of a kind of a project that would or would not be eligible under this grant, or for promotion under this grant?
Well, I mean, ultimately, it'd be for clean energy projects. And I think that this is to build the capacity and the environment around where we could find additional funding sources and programmatic elements, processes, approval process to support those, those types of projects. This in particular, though, is, and I'm just going to read off of our memo here, an example of market-building activities, which is the terminology that EPA uses, includes marketing, customer education, and engagement, community outreach, contractor engagement, workforce development, and essentially, well, development of clean energy and climate action plans and such. So there's a fairly large catch-all in terms of the types of activities that this grant could support in the, in developing and pursuing.
Yeah. The manager?
So, so this would be the first grant of hopefully more to come, because this is really about building capacity, the actual putting together of the programs that we might be able to implement in Keene and in the region to bring forward more green projects. But the actual construction projects themselves would be something that would be a later initiative.
Hey, Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm curious, does this grant go to hiring another employee to add to staff? And that would be over the duration of the grant?
Yeah. So part of it is going to hiring a consultant or a contract employee either. That determination has not been made. So a contract employee would, would be simply someone who works for us to the end of this grant for this purpose. And when Senior Planner Mary Bierner first came to me, one of the things I thought about was, we've always wanted to do more with a sustainability coordinator, but really never had the funds to do that. And I think a lot of the work that we might be able to accomplish with this person and this coalition would be similar to what a sustain, sustainability coordinator might do for us. And so it could bring some potential opportunities to show how that might work.
Seeing no further comments. Sorry, Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a clarification. I'm not sure that we read...
I think we need to read it into the record. Would you like me to read it?
I'll withdraw my second on the intent.
Sure.
Okay. So the action we'd be taking is to authorize the city manager to do all things necessary to accept, execute, and expend a municipal investment fund Phase One grant if awarded to the city of Keene, and enter into a sub-grant agreement with ICLI USA within 30 days of receipt of a notice of funding.
Move to carry out the intent of the committee report.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, would the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Second, yes, sorry.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. Good luck with the grant. Okay. We have...
So we have one more time report. This is a finance report regarding the Heritage Commission request for city support for a 250th Independence Day celebration on July 4th, 2026.
And more time is granted on this item. Move on to Section I, ordinances for our first reading.
And we have one ordinance for first reading this evening, and it comes from our Public Works Director relating to prohibited parking in proximity to driveways. And we have ordinance O 2025-22, and ordinance related to prohibited parking areas.
And we'll refer this to Municipal Services, Facilities, and Infrastructure Committee. Moving on to Section J, ordinances for a second reading.
And our first ordinance for second reading is coming out of the Planning Licenses and Development Committee, and we have a committee report relating to amendments to the Land Development Code relative to feather signs in industrial districts. And on a vote of four to zero, the Planning Licenses and Development Committee recommends the adoption of ordinance O 2025-08A. And we have ordinance O 2025-08A, an ordinance relating to feather signs in the industrial and industrial park districts.
Counselor Jones for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move the adoption of ordinance O 2025-08A. Second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is strictly taking baby steps with feather signs. I believe it was initiated by you, Mr. Mayor, because there were some constituents that contacted you. Right now, we're just allowing them in the industrial zones, and we're, we have pushed back from the streets, push, we have distance from each other, and so on. We have a lot of priorities we put into here. This is a start. We did have people ask for it to be in the commercial areas, but we're going to start with the industrial zones, see how it works. And I have to tell you, since you first initiated this, as I travel around, I look at these feather signs in different communities all over, and I see signs in different communities all over, and I see them get weather torn and sun bleached and everything else, and I'm so glad we have these restrictions, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This has been around the horn a few times, so any further comments from counselors? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our second ordinance.
And this is also coming out of Planning, Licenses, and Development Committee, and this relates to amendments to the Land Development Code for single-family parking requirements. And on a role, on, on a vote of four to zero, the Planning, Licenses, and Development Committee recommends the adoption of Ordinance O 2025-09. And we have Ordinance O 2025-09, an ordinance relating to parking requirements for single-family dwellings.
Counselor Jones for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the adoption of Ordinance O 2025-09.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. Counselor Jones for the committee.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, when we did our, when we redid our code two and a half years ago, we did say there were gonna come some little bumps that come along as we, as we work our way through it, and this is just one of them. It's a simple change. It's a minimum onsite parking regulation for, for display dwelling, single-family units. And that's all it is. It's what we've been practicing, which is putting it into words.
Yeah, yeah. And in the process of that change, it just got deleted from that section of the Land Development Code, right?
Exactly, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. So with this correct, should we pass this? It will make the correction. Any questions on this item? Seeing none. Would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
Yes.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. We move on to our third second reading of another ordinance.
And our final ordinance is coming out of the Planning, Licenses, and Development Committee, and it relates to the discharge of fireworks. And on a vote of four to zero, the Planning, Licenses, and Development Committee recommends the adoption of Ordinance O 2025-19. And we have Ordinance O 2025-19, an ordinance relating to the discharge of fireworks.
Counselor Jones for a motion.
I move the adoption of Ordinance O 2025-19.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. Counselor Jones for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking Counselor Williams for bringing this forward. It's not exactly what he wanted, but it was, I think, it was something that the, that the council worked out, and it worked out fine. We do, we are spacing out our fireworks now. We do have restrictions on where the location is, how many we can have in each year, and so on. And you know, I've been following this and what other cities do around the country, and it, it creates a void, but it's a good void. In other cities where they're doing restrictions, the fireworks companies are going to other methods, such as drone entertainment, or are using lighting, skylighting, and so on. So I think this is good for the city, and I also wanna ironically add on, for those of you that have known me for years, every city council meeting, I wear whatever the colors are of the Health Awareness Month, and June is PTSD Awareness Month, so it's kind of ironic that we're introducing this ordinance on the night where I'm wearing the PTSD colors. So thank you.
So noted, Counselor. I also wanna thank our city attorney for her work on this. There was, the input came from several different directions, and it's a very straightforward ordinance. Any questions and comments? Counselor Williams.
Yeah, I just wanna talk a little bit about the origins of this and why. Some of the newer counselors won't remember, but a few years back, we had an incident where the council approved fireworks at a, at a private location that we don't usually approve fireworks at, but we approved it. And then later, we found out via social media that there was a case where there was an autistic child who lived nearby, who was affected by the fireworks and the lights and the sounds, and, you know, didn't really get ample warning ahead of time to the parents that that was gonna happen. And that really got me thinking about, well, you know, fireworks are fun, but they also have negative effects, and what are some of the ways that we can mitigate these negative effects? Not just on, on people, you know, autistic people, people with PTSD, people like my wife, who just don't like all the, all the lights and the noise, but also animals, including horses and dogs, and wild animals, and our natural environment, which does get affected, you know, when there's explosions going off in the sky, you know? That's a, that's a way that we frighten away our birds and our critters. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this ordinance. I would also add that in addition to putting a cap on the number of fireworks shows that, that we will approve, it also closes a loophole that would allow commercial fireworks operators to, to use non-commercial fireworks to skirt around needing to get a license, and this, this closes that loophole. So that's what I have to say about it, and I hope you all vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Haas.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Just to point out that for the most part, no one will notice the difference in the number of fireworks shows. We still have them at the Fourth of July. We still have them at Swamp Bat Game. I guess the end of the season they'll do it. So it won't see, there won't be any change. It just keeps it from running away on us now, and closing those other loopholes that Counselor Williams mentioned. Thank you. Oops, forgot.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further comments? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Tobin.
Yes.
Counselor Remy.
No.
Counselor Filio.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Madison.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese.
Yes.
Counselor Lake.
Yes.
Counselor Workman.
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald.
Yes.
So a thirteen to one vote on that. Thank you, counselors. Okay. At this point, we are to the highlight of the evening. We have our budget items that were tabled from the last meeting. And at this point, I would ask that I, I, I will take those from the table. The city finance director is joining us at the table here for any other questions that may come up. And so we have the amendments that came from other counselors that have been tabled. We will bring those forward during this discussion. So at this point, I'm going to take Resolution R 2512B and ask the clerk to read that resolution into the record.
And we have Resolution R 202512B, a resolution relating to the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget. And this resolution specifies that the sum of $30,291,365 be raised by taxation during the current year, which together with the sum of $45,888,796 for estimated operating revenues, aggregating $76,180,161, is hereby appropriated for the use of the several departments of the city government, and further, that the sum of $5,566,255 be appropriated for capital expenditures and capital reserve appropriations in the city's proprietary funds, funded by the use of capital reserves, fund balance, and current revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, as attached here too, and made a part thereof.
Recognize Counselor Powers for the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-12-B.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers, do you wish to address this now?
Very briefly.
Yes, thank you.
This is our spending plan for the next year. A lot of work that went into it to get it to the point that it's brought before the entire council. It represents a lot of work every day that we do, the cost of doing business. It represents a lot of work by the folks that build the budget. Every department has a big part of this. Finance Department knee-deep into it, and they're very happy to be done tonight, but they're only gonna start next week to do the next one. Running the city is big business. Just paint like it used to be, and it's, it's a lot of activity. I think that the city has got it down to a process that works very well to consider all the needs, and then try to finance it in a way that it doesn't adversely affect the average person paying the bill through their taxes. So I'm, I'm very happy to be able to introduce this. I urge you all to vote yes, that it's unanimous vote when we pass it in finality, and we'll get to work carrying out all those projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Filio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of brief words. As I stand here tonight, this is my 27th budget that I've stood here in front of the council on. For those years, I spent as finance, as Chair of the Finance Committee, so I appreciate the process and what Counselor Powers and the Finance Committee went through. Been there, done that. With that said, I just wanna make it very clear tonight that I won't be supporting any changes to the budget, no matter what amendment is made. I feel that the staff, the Finance Committee, put together an excellent budget, kudos to the city manager, that we're actually seven tenths of a percent below the rate of inflation for our area. That's an incredible budget. One of the arguments we've always had in my 27 years has always been last second, you know, arguments with particular nonprofits, that where's the money gonna go? Let's shift some. We didn't fund enough to one, we funded too much to the other. As Counselor Jones remember, the budget adoption night used to go to midnight, sometimes later than midnight, back in my early days in council. That's back before we had a protocol of how we funded nonprofits. Back in those days, it was done on the council floor, budget adoption night. It was always based on emotion. You can take any one of the items on here, and we could split every one of the nonprofits up and give every one of us one of them, and we could argue why it needed more money, and every one of us would be right. Every one of us would be correct. But then, if you had to argue, which one do you take it away from while this, where the argument begins? Back in those days, we didn't have the protocol. Back then, Mayor Lynch at the time realized that we can't be funding nonprofits on emotion, because it was based on who would give the best emotional story. The elderly, the children, the hungry, the homeless. And if we voted no, the next day, those councils would be called out as being non-compassionate. And so that's why the meetings went so late. You'd be sitting here going, where do I go with this? How am I gonna be portrayed on this? And it wasn't fair to the council, and it wasn't fair to the nonprofits either, because whoever could give the best argument might get the most money. The one that didn't give a good argument, even though they might have deserved more, wouldn't get the money. So back then, Mayor Lynch formed a committee to study how we funded outside agencies, to basically be on logic and on protocol, and not on emotion. I know that because I chaired that committee. What we did is we sat down with the city manager at that time, we sat down with all the nonprofits, we sat down with staff. We said, how do we come up with a protocol to set this spending up before budget adoption night, so it doesn't come back to the emotional pleas? And so we did. And that protocol, to this day, is almost the same as the protocol that was approved back then. It has to do with how many Keene residents use that particular nonprofit. Is there funding from other sources that they could be using? Other, other towns being billed for that particular agency? All those questions, once again, they're all still there. Go to, go to the city manager, go to city staff, and they'll show you what the protocol are. Now, with that said, if we want the protocol changed, we don't think it's fair, we don't think one's getting adequately funded, we'll have to talk to the city manager, sit down with city staff, and change the protocol. But until we do that, let's not be doing this on the council floor based on which one of us stands up and gives the best emotional speech. Because like I said, go to page, what is it, 46? Everybody pick one. Stand up and make the argument about why that nonprofit should get more funding than the other. You'll all be right, every one of us will be right, but then we go back to where we did years ago, where we all stand up to midnight trying to make the most emotional plea. And also, by changing the budget for the nonprofits on this 11th hour, also is not fair to those directors for the nonprofits that did not show up and ask for more money, based on we went through the city council policy and protocol, we did it the right way. Jeez, if we knew you were gonna give more money, we'd be there too. And once again, go to page 46 and go down and call every one of them and ask them. If you knew that we could give you more money, would you have asked for it? Not if we're gonna say no. The argument that they're getting less money from the state and the federal government is legit. No doubt about it. You know, there's not a lot of compassion coming from the state and from the federal government. But with that said, their budgets aren't even complete yet. We don't even know if the city is gonna get shortchanged. Well, we know we're gonna get shortchanged. We don't know how much. State hasn't come to a conclusion yet where their budget is. Federal government certainly hasn't come to a conclusion where the budget is. We don't know we're gonna get cut. We know we're getting cut again on rooms and meals tax here in the city. So when we get cut, where do we cut? Where's the money gonna come from? Because we don't know yet. Once again, some of the nonprofits are right. They're getting cut from state and feds. So is this city. So ask yourself, when we get cut, where are you gonna make up the monies from? It's a legitimate question, because we know we're gonna get cut. There's no mercy coming out of Concord and Washington to local municipalities. So after this budget is done, like I said, if you wanna change your protocol, let's go to the city manager, let's sit down when emotions aren't high, and let's base, let's do it based on logic. Now, I know some of the council is gonna try to make motions tonight to increase some, but once again, that's not fair to the agency that didn't ask for some. I hear there's a motion that we wanna take from one and give to another, kinda the Robin Hood thing. Once again, 11th hour, based on emotion. We do our budget here based on logic. As the Finance Committee knows, as Counselor Powers knows, and as staff knows, six months, we've worked on this budget. Every one of these line items has been worked on for six months. And we had a chance to go to the Finance Committee meeting to make changes then, and that's one of the reasons I oppose 11th hour changes based on emotion and not on logic. So once again, you wanna change the procedure, you wanna change the protocol, go to the city manager, go to staff, and say, go to the nonprofits, bring them here and say, we wanna change how the funding is done, but do not do it at 11th hour based on emotion. It's not fair to the nonprofits.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I generally agree with what Counselor Filio said, except that it was completely wrong in this instance because Arts Alive was not given the opportunity, because they weren't listed as an outside agency to ask for money. So when they did come forward at the public hearing, that was their first opportunity to request money, because they weren't listed as an outside agency, and they didn't get put into that process to be evaluated through that very detailed process, which I have been part of as well, and is a really good process. Coming out of that, as someone who doesn't want the budget to go up anymore, I wanted to try to see if we could try to meet their need in some way, shape, or form, because I, I do think it's important, and I do think they, they didn't have an opportunity to come for us and ask for more like the other organizations did. And going through that, it's a matter of trade-offs, and where do you, how do you keep the balance of the budget to stay flat and pull money from somewhere to feed that, if you think that's important? To say that this is an 11th hour reduction, or 11th hour change is, I, I don't think that's fair at all. The Senate will actually use the same language today. I don't think that's fair at all, because our process is that we had the public hearing two weeks ago, and this is where those amendments come to. So to say it's 11th hour, this is the process. We, we have it written into our rules that we submit letters by this Tuesday at a certain time to get them in. That's our process. To say it's 11th hour is just trying to make your point. I don't think that's, that's fair, fair representation. That said, I do have an amendment that I wanna make at some point, but I don't know if we wanna go to that yet.
I, I, if, if there were comments on the general budget, before we get into the amendments, I understand where Counselor Filio wanted to, I, I understand why he raised his hand. I understand why you wanted to, to speak. But at this point, we do have three amendments that were submitted. The first one that we're going to take off the table would be Counselor Remy's motion and amendment, and unless anybody's got any other general comments, I would go to that. Counselor Roberts.
Yes, Your Honor. I just heard some of my fellow councilmen talking about being insulted and not doing the process and doing the motion. I stand right here totally insulted, because I've had a long professional career on making things without making emotion evolve. If I made mistakes, people died, and I had to be emotionalist and continue on with my job. So to come in- So to come and say, as an elected official, I do not have the ability to stand here and make a judgment in a non-emotional manner, is totally insulting. And I am going to make comments. I will make comments on these proposed amendments. And every single one of us have the right to stand up here and say what they think is best. And to imply that it's all going to be on emotion is implying that anybody who stands up and speaks on emotion is not a leader and shouldn't be here.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. Seeing no more general comments, like to take off the table. Counselor Remy, would you like to introduce your amendment?
Sure. I think we have three that touch on similar things, so I guess I'll go first and see how we do. So move to amend resolution R 202512B to increase the Arts Alive allocation in the general fund account 521815 from $500 to $7,000, and that the outside agency account 521330 for the Keane Senior Center be reduced by $6,500. Thoughts out.
Motion's on the table. Seconded by Counselor Workman. Okay. Comments from counselors? Counselor Favalese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real briefly, want to address this, and I know that, as Counselor Remy said, there are, I think, three kind of different ways to get to a similar result related to the Arts Alive funding. I do want to just read very briefly a section from the community-funded events portion of the budget book that references the city council's policy on community-funded events, because Counselor Remy did reference community events, or community-funded events in his letter to council introducing the amendment in the agenda packet. Everything that is listed under the community-funded events is a singular occurrence event. So it's things like Independence Eve, it's things like the four and the Fourth Road Race. And whether we want to take a look at that as a council and think about if that accurately captures, if that, the kinds of events on list accurately capture what we want to be doing in terms of funding community-funded events and assigning that designation, I think that's a discussion that we can have. I'm always happy to go back and look at policies. This particular resolution says that for an event to be a community-funded event, city council must find the event takes place on public property, that the event applicant is registered with the state of New Hampshire as a nonprofit organization, but also that the event shall have been previously produced at least twice prior. And so I'm struggling to see how something like the Keane Senior Center as an entity would be a community-funded event, and I think that that's something that the council should keep in mind.
Can I clarify my letter?
Yes. Recognize Counselor Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to clarify, Senior Center is not under community-funded events, they are under outside agencies. My reason for referencing the community events is the way that our policy is written on community events is it needs to be an event that supports up to 500 people in order to be considered for community event funding. And even in that case, we cap them at a $10,000 non-cash expense reimbursement. Basically, we won't charge them for city services used. I was trying to correlate the services offered in being a social organization and helping to break that social isolation that is so important to not have in seniors, and to give them an opportunity to be out and be social. Same for young folks, right? Same thing, we got to have events for people to do, or else, I think it's 40% of people from 22 to 35, don't quote me on the numbers, because it's an old stat, basically saying that there was a very significant portion of young folks that don't have a single person that they could call. I think it's very similar at upper ages, right? It's, I think, throughout your age brackets here, that would be similar. How we support that, I think, we do community events, we do different things, but to say that this is an outside agency providing social services, I think that's fine, and I think they do some of that, but their self-reported numbers that came in in the letter to council and written support said that they have about 400 members, 100 of them require support financially. At the request of 16,500, that's $165 per person on those financial assisted folks, or 40-ish dollars on the entire membership group, per person that we were giving them, if we give them the funded amount. My request to bring it down to 10,000 means that we'd be giving them $100 per person that is in need of financial need, or $25 per total member, based on the rough numbers that were in that letter. I just think it's more in line with the service, the volume of service that they're providing to the city. That's why I suggested pulling from that area, just because of the number of members being served that are Keane residents versus the dollars being spent are much higher than any of the other organizations that we're dealing with, and that's why I was suggesting making the adjustment there. So, just to clarify where that reference was.
Yeah, and further, I did take notes on their presentation. They said 468 members currently, which would cotton down to around $25 a member, just to point that out. While I'm saying something, I'm sorry to interfere in this conversation, you no doubt will, something that bothers me in the federal and state budget processes is how close these budget cuts that they're suggesting, in particular on the state, are to the start of a fiscal year. This reduction to the Senior Center has that kind of characteristic occurring 11 days prior to the start of the fiscal year. There are two separate questions in front of us, one being the Arts Alive increase, the other being the decrease, and just to offer that on the decrease side, I'm seeing hands going. I saw Counselor Roberts first, Counselor Haas, and then Counselor Lake. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, the question, we don't want to change the established protocols that brought the other outside agencies their funding. We don't want to take away from somebody that may have counted on what they thought that the city was going to approve. That's community service, these are outside agencies. What this is all coming down to, may come up in the next motion, I think we're going to consider, is funding for the arts, and that's what is missing here. It's not an outside agency that replaces some social service that the city otherwise would do. It's not a community event that happens one time, it's an important support to the entire city over the entire year. And so I hope we get to that next amendment that may do that. And we look at it in terms of, the other listing of, under mayor and council where Arts Alive appears, that it's that type of function that supports the life of the city. So I want to keep everything as it is, as Counselor Filial said. We don't want to take away from senior centers, as Counselor Remy has dutifully proposed to try to make it all balance out, but we know the direction that we want to go to is support of the arts. Thank you.
Other counselors? Counselor Roberts?
I do not support taking any money away from the Senior Center, because if you look at the statistics and the demographics in the city of Keane, and you look at the high rate of homelessness, it's increasing, we even have seniors in the 100 Night Shelter. We look at the people who are just barely surviving in their homes, because the tax rates are going higher and higher, while their social security check is basically, this year, went up two and a half percent. For the people that worked at Kingsbury, I see people, $129 pension, retired 30 years ago, didn't go up a penny. Okay? Also, if you look at the center disease control, look at the suicide rate that's increasing for people 55 and above. And a lot of times, it's through a drug overdose because of loneliness, but we're nice and polite, and we say natural causes. The people, the elderly, are hurting. They're hurting really bad. They're hurting financially, they're hurting, they don't have the money, they don't have the ability to get up and go. And without the Senior Center, some of these people would not be here. And when we talk about the Senior Center, if we've looked over the past 20 years for council members that have been on here, the city has been playing back and forth whether the Senior Center would become part of the city's budget, like a lot of other communities have. For a long time, we were really thinking about getting rid of the Senior Center, them selling it, and they moving into direct center, putting on. Should the Senior Center be a community event or one of these? Probably not. It's been talked about in a number of different ways with the city. Yes, we're here right now, looking to say, where do we take money from one to another? But I do not think the Senior Center should be losing anything right now, and I think we need to go back to what we were doing before, as the city, as a community, to decide what kind of relationship are we going to have with our seniors in the city of Keane.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lake?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll keep it brief. I do want to thank Counselor Remy for her support in adding some funding to Arts Alive, but I disagree with the general substance of the motion. I do think that the two motions that we have coming up better tackle the issue, and so I won't be supporting this, but I'm looking forward to the next two motions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Filio?
Thank you. I just want to stand and say, about a minute ago, you know, Counselor Roberts disagreed with some of my wording, and that's fine, my esteemed colleague and I are still good friends, but the point he just made about the Senior Center, I agree with him 100%, which is the argument that I was trying to make, making changes on the fly. He's absolutely correct. We should not be cutting anything from the Senior Center, and those fundings were based on logic, not on a motion to make a cut on the council floor. So I agree with you 100% that this is the danger that you make when you try to make motions on the council floor without something having gone through the due process of logic. Logic can be cold and black and white, but there's a reason that is called logic.
Anybody else wishing to speak on Counselor Remy's proposal, his amendment? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Tobin?
No.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
No.
Counselor Williams?
No.
Counselor Haas?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor Madison?
No.
Counselor Roberts?
No.
Counselor Favalese?
No.
Counselor Lake?
No.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne?
No.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Greenwald?
No.
Two in favor and 11 opposed, 12 opposed, yeah, 14. Okay, we move on to, I now can take the Second Amendment off the table, item C6, and ask if either Counselor Tobin or Counselor Williams would like to introduce their amendment.
We move to amend the budget by increasing the allocation to Arts Alive from $500 to $10,000.
Seconded by Counselor Lake. And Counselor Williams, would you like to address your amendment?
I just want to say, you know, the arts are really, really important to the economy of Keane, and they're hurting. Budgets have been slashed at the federal level, the state level sure looks bad. We heard at the hearing two weeks ago, that, I don't remember the exact number, but it was something like $50,000 or $70,000 in grants is no longer there. We need to support this important activity in our community, because if we don't, it's going to hurt our economy. There have already been layoffs in the art sector. This week, a friend of mine lost his job at a local arts institution, and that's because of a lack of funding. Could be the first of many. And that's really concerning to me, so I think we should, we can't do it all, but we should do what we can, and I think $10,000, you know, based on what we fund other initiatives at, I think is an appropriate amount, so I hope you will support this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tobin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that, I think, in this room, all of us would like to increase the funding for arts, all of us support arts, and none of us want to increase the budget. And one of the things that I guess I kept thinking about is, first of all, a lot of the state and federal funding has been cut in these areas, which means that if we want the arts, we do need to support it locally, it needs to be funded locally. We've made in Keane, arts the core of a lot of the things that we do. A lot of our festivals, we talk about an arts corridor, we have Art Walk going on right now. It's a hub for artists, and that includes writers, musicians. I remember when I started painting, every conversation, I was finding someone new who was doing some new form of art. It's a really powerful thing in terms of mental health and people in recovery. I remember going to, I bought a piece of art, bought two pieces of art at Nova Arts, which is one of the organizations that Arts Alive is connected with. And one of the, one of the artists was telling me, I asked how they started, and one said, well, I was in recovery, and this is what I did when I was in recovery. I went to AA meetings and I carved these blocks of wood. Another started doing her form of art as a form of therapy for her anxiety. When I, I did speak with them after, and I went through logically, and I went through and I asked them all the questions that are listed in our budget as criteria, and I won't read all of this, but in terms of the organizations that they fund, or that they are connected with, one of the criteria is that they demonstrate efforts of cooperation and avoid duplication with other agencies. So some of the things that they are connected with, organizations that they have supported or partnered with in some way, there's the Manonuck International Film Festival, Ashland Concerts, Makerspace, The Waldogs, Festival and Installation, Hannah Grimes, Chamber of Commerce, Manonuck Travel Council, KSC, Art Walk, Elevate the Arts, Nova Arts, and that was not an extensive list. I understand that 10,000 is a lot, and also, when I think about all of the partner organizations, all of them are being impacted by the same cuts at the same time. So it's not a situation where you can really go to your partner and kind of ask them to make up the difference. I think that going into a year where we will be doing construction, I think that it's important to continue that community and to kind of not, to not lose that momentum of gaining that reputation as an arts city, so I hope you support it.
Counselor Lake?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I thank both the counselors for their wonderful words about why arts are important. I just want to take a moment to actually just talk about just the funding piece of it. I think that's an important aspect of the difference between the three amendments that were proposed tonight. So, you know, Counselor Remy suggested that we move from one agency to another. I, in the motion that may be coming up, has suggested maybe moving it from our capital reserve balance, and the motion that we have in front of us would be instead just to increase the revenue. Having had a day to kind of consider all three of those different possibilities and the different ways that we go about this, I think this is the way that we should go forward on both the amount that we should fund Arts Alive and the way that we should fund Arts Alive. I think this is the way to go about it, and so I plan on supporting this motion, as well as parts of my future motion, but specifically on the two pieces for how we would fund Arts Alive, I want to support this motion and hope that you all do as well. Thank you.
Counselor Filio?
Your Honor, I have to stand up and play Debbie Downer again. I can argue with a thing of the counselor said about Arts Alive being important to the city. I have no, I have no argument at all with that. They absolutely are. But once again, if you go to page 46 and ask any of them if they'd like a 2,000% increase, that's what we're proposing here. 500 to 10,000 is a 2,000% increase. I'm not saying they're not worthy of it. Arts Alive and Keane, just like the other nonprofits, are absolutely worthy of more monies. But once again, we're doing this on the fly. We go from 500 to 10,000, a 2,000% increase. I'm sure the community kitchen, I'm sure the homeless shelters would love a 2,000% increase. I'm sure the community kitchen, I'm sure the homeless shelters would love a 2,000% increase. Based on what? Motion or logic? You know, ask yourself that. So I don't disagree, once again, that Arts Alive aren't a phenomenal institution for Keene and a worthy, you know, worthy nonprofit of getting money from Keene. No question about that, but once again, let's go back to the city manager and staff and say, "We need to change the formula." As far as Arts Alive goes, let's change the formula, and let's realize, yeah, there's not going to be as much funding coming from the state and federal government. Let's change the formula. But a 2,000% increase? I'm sure everybody in the nonprofit list would enjoy a 2,000% increase, but those are the facts.
All right, so Counselor Haas first, and then Counselor Remy.
Thank you, Your Honor. The facts are, yep, that all the other organizations were like it, they are outside agencies. This is just a special allocation that comes from another direction within the budget. I don't know what the correct number is, maybe we'll get to discussing that later, but certainly, and I struggled with the idea that Arts Alive is one organization. What about all the other arts-supporting organizations in the city? But the difference, I think, is all the other arts organizations are specific, slot-specific, time-specific, locations, whereas Arts Alive is a broad support to everything. That's, to me, it really fits under the category of all the other committees and commissions that we are there. I mean, we have $5,000 for Partner City work. How do we compare that in value to the city against an organization that promotes the arts across the board? Thank you.
Counselor Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the council of this, what, the other organizations were asked, that's the difference between the ones on page 46. They were asked what they wanted for their increases. They had an opportunity to put that in. Because Arts Alive is actually on page 43, not on page 46, they weren't asked.
Counselor Lake, and Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to touch on this idea of us kind of doing this on the whim, that these organizations had their opportunity to come in and request these funds. Sure, they did at the very start of the year, and then the committee that Randy, sorry, Counselor Filio, had referenced before, I've sat on that a couple times, we meet again at the start of the year. Things have changed significantly, if everyone wasn't aware, since the start of the year. So these funding requests came in, and that committee made their decisions based on information that has significantly changed over the past just a few months. And so these aren't being made emotionally, on the fly, the 11th hour, as they've been characterized here. These are reactions to changes in our political environment and in the funding for these things. Many of these organizations may have had to come in with a different pitch if they had known, or we may have made different decisions if we had known at those times. So I do want to clarify that these decisions were made quite a while ago. The city manager will attest to, they've been working on this budget since the last budget was made. So we're here to finalize this budget and make amendments as we see fit, and these are good amendments, and so I urge my fellow counselors to go ahead and make these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Roberts?
When I was a kid going to school, we all had to read a book in Massachusetts, and it was called Profiles in Courage, which very few politicians read nowadays. But what struck me about Arts Alive, when the lady stood there and stated, she refused to file for a federal grant because the federal grant said that she had to wipe out all diversity, equity, and the other one. She said it was more important to go without the money and be true to their core. They refused not to sell their soul just to get some money from the president and his people. To me, that was a profile and courage moment. It wasn't an emotional moment, it was someone staying right here is, we would rather go down in flames if necessary, but go down with our integrity intact. So what they have come in and said, yes, we would like to get $10,000 so we can go $10,000 to other places and maybe get $2 and $3 return on every additional dollar. This is not an emotional thing, this is a totally logical thing. They stood it. This is what we're going to do. The emotional thing would be, what can we do to get the money and worry about what's going to happen later on? That's why I'm supporting it. It was a profile and courage moment.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Your Honor. I am also going to support this amendment. One of my big concerns is, it's not emotional, it's logic. We're going through a big downtown reconstruction project in the next few years. A big part of our economy is the arts. They're going to need a lot of support. We cannot count on support from the federal government because, well, it's a mess right now. We can't really count on support from the state government because that's also a mess. So we need to support our own arts economy. This is the way we do it. She didn't really have a chance during the official process because of where her line was in the budget. She came before the council and asked, knowing that the worst that could really happen was we say no. Here we are discussing it. This is a logical progression to address her budget needs. That being said, I have asked Ms. Iris to reach out to other surrounding neighboring towns to also support the arts. I think there is a concern among many in the city and many on the council that some nonprofits only come to Keene to look for support and do not go to surrounding towns because either those surrounding towns will say no, true, or they're afraid that, you know, for whatever reason, a property tax increase in a surrounding town is unacceptable at any level. Earlier this year, actually just about a month ago, my neighbor and I decided we were going to pave our driveway. We have a shared driveway. He has a kind of landlocked lot behind my house. So we came up with a plan of how we would divvy out the cost. He would pay for his parking area, I would pay for my parking area, and then we'd split the driveway 50/50. It worked out. If it was going to be just me paying for it, I wouldn't be able to flip that. I'm a state employee. He's not going to be able to pay for it. Why should he pay for something that I use as well as my parking areas? So we came up with a way that was equitable to share the cost of paving the driveway. I paid a little more than he did because I had more to pave, but we still split what we needed to share with each other. This region needs to adopt a similar mentality. For nonprofits and area organizations that benefit the region as a whole, our surrounding towns and the county need to do more to step up to support those organizations. The city of Keene simply cannot be a piggy bank. The people who live in this town have roughly the state average median household income. Many of our surrounding towns have among the lowest property tax rates in the state and among the highest median household incomes. I'm effectively asking the wealthy to pay their fair share. I do not think that is unreasonable. I do not think it is unreasonable to ask the organizations who come to Keene and ask us for funding to also go to our neighboring towns, no matter how small, and ask them for their fair share in supporting their regional activities. Thank you.
Good point. Counselor Madison? Counselor Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, I, there's a part of me that's glad that my amendment got defeated. I, as much as I wanted to put forth an option for the council that was balancing and showing this, and how do we have a fair trade between, you know, keeping the bottom line and trying to figure out which organizations are lined up with a number of people, I'm okay with the proposal that is in front of us right now. I'd prefer not to increase the bottom line, but at the end of the day, I think this organization is important. They provide a lot of services to a lot of organizations that are going to be important to Keene, and they're that backbone organization that keeps them running, so, yeah, I generally am supportive of this. I'm a little glad mine got defeated because I would have felt bad, I still, you know, it's Nova Fund, to take money from anywhere, but that's the hard part with this job, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. I think we've talked through this.
Yeah, just one final statement. I agree with everything that's been said. I'm not going to argue with anything they've said about Arts Alive. I'm just going to stand up to what I said at the beginning of the night, that I'm just not going to approve any changes tonight on the fly. So, yep, you are correct, but once again, you know, I'll go back to page 46, and there's one nonprofit now listed on there, it's our taxpayers. They pick up the tab.
Dean, no further comments. Would the clerk please call the roll on Counselor Williams, Counselor Tobin's amendment?
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
No.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalis?
No.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
No.
Counselor Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Greenwald?
No, sorry.
I'm not going to guess on this vote.
Eight to six.
There are eight yes and six no. Motion, I mean, amendment is adopted. We move on to amendment number three, introduced by Counselor Lake.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'd kind of already touched on some of why. I think the amendment that I'm about to propose is important, so there were three outside agencies that didn't receive an increase in prior year budget, and I do want to just make a clarification too for the council, in case they weren't aware. The department request that's listed in your books, it's on page 46, is the amount that's recommended out of the committee that is doing the reviews early in the year. It's not the amount that was actually requested by these organizations. So the amounts that I'm proposing here are short of those requests. They lie somewhere in between what that committee had recommended, which was level funding from the prior year, and the request that those organizations had made, again, back at the very start of the year. So just, I feel that's an important clarification to make as to why I'm proposing these increases here. So again, I think all three of these agencies are deserving of an increase. Again, I tried to make it as in line, as close to roughly as inflation as I could, with some rounded numbers there, but I want to address as well the vote that we just had. So we just...
Counselor, can I, I'd like to ask for a five-minute recess. I just need a restroom break myself. I don't know about the rest of you, but if you would allow to come back in a moment. Thank you. We'll be at five minutes of recess.[1406.83] We'll be at five minutes recess. Council will come back into order. We'll take our seats. Almost all in our seats. Okay. My apologies to Counselor Lake, but thank you. Thank you for allowing that interruption. Please continue with your presentation.
Thank you, Your Honor. And yes, Counselor-
Oh, Counselor Greenwald, are you still with us?
I thought I heard a distant yes somewhere.
You're back. Very good. Yeah, he is present. He is present. Counselor Lake, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I did just chat for a moment about the increases that I am suggesting for those outside agencies. I did want to talk again briefly, and I alluded to this in my, in the comments on the last motion, regarding the Arts Alive piece and then the decrease in the capital reserve, which was how I tied very specifically to the increase in the Arts Alive line item. Because we've already voted on the Arts Alive increase and how we were going to fund it, I believe that those are now moot points because we've already, as a council, kind of decided what to do on that. So the motion that I will be making is move to amend resolution R-202512B as follows. Increase outside agency account 521360 for the Keen Community Kitchen from $110,000 to $115,000. Increase outside agency account 521470 for Keen Housing Kids Collaborative from $12,500 to $13,000. Increase outside agency account 521330 for the Senior Citizen Center from $16,500 to $17,750, resulting in a net increase of $6,750 in the amount of revenue to be raised by taxation.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Workman. So the way that I am viewing this, I'm looking to some others to indicate if that's not the case, is that we've got three amendments in front of us that we'll consider individually.
Counselor Lake did make the motion with all three together, so I would defer to the counselor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would say, yes, these are a bundle of amendments. I would like to make them together. They are all being made in the same spirit. I'm not singling out any one outside agency. Again, as I commented on earlier, these were three agencies that did not receive a suggested increase from prior year budget, Keen Senior Center for more than that. They've been level funded for a couple of years now. And so I do, did intend for these to be voted on as a package.
Okay. One package, the total amount of increase to the budget that this represents, I believe, is $7,750. Six thousand. $6,750. Stand corrected. Looked like seven to me. Oh, it's only five hundred. Yeah, it's only five hundred to the Kids Collab. That's the difference. $6,750. Counselor Workman, you're the second.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to speak on this where I haven't spoken on the other previous motions we voted on. I fully support increasing the funding for Arts Alive, which we already did. The reason I had voted no on the previous ones was because I didn't want to increase the bottom line of the overall budget by $10,000, which is why I really supported Counselor Lake's proposed amendments. One of the things I liked about Counselor Lake's proposal was that the other three agencies that he proposes giving an increase to are three agencies that are absolute lifelines to our most vulnerable populations in our communities. And again, I know this isn't emotional. It is a reality that our constituents are going to rely on those services that those three agencies provide at an increasingly higher rate in the next upcoming months and years. So I fully support, as much as I didn't want to increase the bottom line of the budget because we're already increasing the anticipated revenue we need to collect. It's not a $10,000 increase. It would be, you know, a little less than $7,000. And when you're looking at the greater good, and I've worked in nonprofits and I've been a grant manager, it's about maximizing the minimum resources that you have and spreading the wealth as much as you can and being as fair and measured in that as possible. And I think Counselor Lake's proposal does just that, so I'm in favor of it.
See, Counselor Favaleese, Counselor Filio then.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had intended at the outset of tonight to support Counselor Lake's amendment. You know, we were not taking money with this amendment from another line item or from another organization that had a line item funding in this budget. And we were adding a little bit to the bottom line, but not quite as much as the $10,000 that we just passed in the, with the last vote on the amendment. And to be clear, very happy to see Arts Alive funded. And I think several counselors made some really compelling cases for support specifically through the downtown project. I just wish it didn't come with the bottom line impact. I do think that Counselor Workman and I were, it was as if I could have been about to stand up and speak as I sat here and thought about it. Sometimes there is benefit to having these discussions and these debates on the fly, on the floor, as it were, because I think it really allows us to evaluate what is the best thing for our constituents as we hear other counselors raising points and counterpoints. These are organizations that Counselor Lake has identified, that just like Counselor Workman said, are filling gaps that in a lot of cases, if these organizations were not providing these, one of two things would be happening. Nobody would be providing them, or the city at probably a higher overall cost would end up having to provide them for the folks that rely on these resources. And so I was opposed to the $10,000 increase on the bottom line. That's now in there, but I don't want to punish these organizations because I do support the increased funding for them for the reasons that Counselors Workman and Lake laid out because of that. So I will be voting yes on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Filio?
Yeah, once again, I'm not too worried about the addition to the bottom line because realistically it's going to be insignificant to the tax rate. I get that. Once again, it goes back to the process, that's all. And as far as being a duplicate provider, that's part of the protocol. That's one of the parts of the protocol looked into. What I'm seeing here is I don't really feel the council has a good grasp on what the protocol is. Maybe some do, maybe some don't. But if we're still doing this at the last minute, then we need to change the protocol somehow. Whether it's, you know, Counselor Lake's right, maybe it's too early in the process. Maybe the council needs to sit down closer to budget time and look at the nonprofits and see where we are. Maybe we are doing this too early. But once again, it's why we have a protocol. It's why you have these set in place. And we're finding ourselves, and you can say it's the eleventh hour, but it pretty much is because, you know, it's not going to be that much longer this budget goes into play. So maybe we do need to look at this later in the process. But it's, once again, it's the reason we set up the process and we have the protocol. And if we're finding ourselves at the last second adding money on based on this nonprofit really needs it, they're worthwhile, once again, every one of them are. We could, what, you know, what are they, fourteen or fifteen of them? Give us each one and we can all make the same argument. We'll all be right. There's no question we'd all be right that they're deserving of the money. But then again, where does the whole process go again? So I guess if the process isn't working, when this budget's over, let's sit down with the city manager and staff and tweak it and make it work better. So when we get to the budget process like this, we don't have to have these last-second discussions over $1,000, a couple thousand dollars, and in one case, $10,000. Let's fix the process, that's all.
Counselor Tobin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just get kind of clarification on the impact of decreasing the capital reserve? Sorry, what? Oh, that was the one we were saying. Sorry. Okay. Sorry?
Yes. Because the decrease to make the adjustment previously was decided by the council, that is no longer a part of the motion. That's the way I understand Counselor Lake's intent and our action previously. Good. My fingers just are not working for me. Two-thirds of a penny? I'm trusting you. Because it's a, I am trying to figure out when you add Counselor Lake's proposal to the previous amendment that we just considered, that the $16,250 that we would be adding to the budget, it's really, as others have characterized, a very small change in the overall expenditures in this budget, the overall amount to be raised by taxation, which is part of the overall motion that I'm sure Carrie is now, is working on. But, you know, we've got a $30 million-plus budget, to which we're talking about tonight, $16,250. So other comments? I see Counselor Roberts.
This is where you, my fellow councilwoman over there, this is where you really take the emotion and put the logic and say, what is the cost-benefit analysis? You don't worry about the person or anybody. So you go in here. What happens if we give a little extra money to the senior center and it saves one veteran from committing suicide? What happens if we give $15 extra a day to the community kitchen and keep someone from getting sick and then have to have Medicare or one of the other agencies pick up because the child spent two or three days in the hospital? What happens at the $500 at Kids Collab where the kid learns, wait a minute, I don't have to be like Mom and Dad. I can go to school and I can be better. You can go in and change people's lives. I'm one of ten kids who grew up on welfare. My daughter is the assistant director up at the nursing home right now. You can change generations and save a lot of stuff with minimal investment. That's what something what Kids Collab is supposed to be doing, and it is doing. And we're talking about $500. And basically, we're talking about a buck and a quarter a day. So that's where you go in and do the cost-benefit analysis. What is going to save the taxpayers money? And I think right now, when we're looking at this amount of things, we're spending a little to save more.
Any further comments on this amendment? I just, city manager just reminded me, if there's anybody who feels that they've got conflict of interest with any of these three, you know, now's the time to suggest that you might. If that's not the case, then we're all good to go. I've seen Counselor Greenwald. Counselor Greenwald?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to clarify that previously, my wife was on the board of directors of the Kids Collaborative, and she is not any longer. So I do not have any conflict of interest regarding that.
Thank you for the clarification. Counselor Haas?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'm troubled that we're focusing on just these couple agencies. I can understand how Counselor Lake put it together with weighing when he had the Arts Alive part included and then found other agencies and found reasons to give to them. But no, there's other very significant contributors to the community here. MCVP, Street Outreach is a major one for dealing with our homeless problem. Yeah, I'm having difficulty just voting for token amounts to some of these agencies. And, you know, every dollar makes a difference, but they've gotten their budgets, it's been set. They know what they're expected to get, barring changes that we make on the fly. So I'm just concerned about, as Counselor Filiald has said, that other agencies follow the process and now we're passing on that.
Counselor Lake?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do just want to address that point again, that we are giving increases to every other organization. These were three that we did not have increases in here. I may have missed one, one other one. Maybe two. CASA, we had given a previous upgrade that was fairly significant, and I felt we would have been out of line on inflation. And same thing with MS, with the Street Outreach, which is a new program. So these are ongoing programs that we've had for an extended period of time that I believe we should be keeping up, at least with inflation, on these increases. Again, these are organizations that have been around for a while, that are cornerstone of our community, and that's why these were picked. They weren't just cherry-picked, just out of the blue. That is why these are, pardon my recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I see no further discussion, no hands up. So seeing none, we will call a question. And clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
No.
Counselor Filio?
No.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favaleese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadbourne?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Greenwald?
I'm muting. Yes. Yes.
Nine, two.
Okay. We've got a vote of nine in favor, five opposed. These items are added to the budget. Seeing no further amendments from the counselors, we will take a few-minute break here, allow the finance director to adjust. If you recall, we are on item L1. The resolution in L1 now needs to be adjusted for the expenditures that we've just amended into the budget. So we'll allow her a couple of minutes to adjust the sum to be raised by taxation and the bottom line. Okay? So I guess we're in recess for a couple of minutes. All right. The council will come back in the session. All right. The council will come back in the session. We have Counselor Greenwald with us.
Yeah. Still here.
All right. We're all together now. All right. I guess we are now looking for an amendment to the main motion. We're back to the main motion, the adoption of budget resolution R 2025-12C as amended. And any comments here from the city finance director?
I think the clerk is going to read the revised resolution.
Are you ready for me to do that? Yes? Okay, so we'll read the revised resolution into the record. We'll read everything. So, we have Resolution R 2025-12C, a resolution relating to the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget. And here, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Kennesaw follows that the sum of $30,307,615 be raised by taxation during the current year, which together with $45,888.76 for estimated operating revenues, aggregating $76,196.400, is hereby appropriated for the use of the several departments of the city of Kennesaw, city government, and further that the sum of $5,566,255 be appropriated for capital expenditures and capital reserve appropriations in the city proprietary funds funded by the use of capital reserves, fund balance, and current revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, as attached here to and made a part thereof.
Okay. Motion is as amended. We can go straight to the vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
And that motion carries unanimously. Was that a unanimous motion?
It was.
It is unanimous. Okay, very good. Thank you. I think that moves us on to item L2.
We'll have to take it off the table.
Sorry?
Take it from the table. Yes?
Yes, we need to take item L2 from the table. I'll now ask Counselor...
So, I will... Let me read this into the record. We have ordinance O 2025-18. This is relating to class allocation and salary schedule.
And Counselor Powers for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt ordinance 2025-18.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Counselor Powers?
Very quickly, Your Honor, this is the salary plan for those non-union positions and some of the part-time positions that we have in the city. This work was done as they built the budget. It reflects a 3% increase to the scale, which is very similar to what negotiations and what increases are in union contracts that are currently in existence. Seems to be a fair overview for the entire, both parties, and it's in the best interest of the city to maintain a paid plant that can attract and keep good personnel. And we got the best, so let's keep them. Thank you.
Any further discussion from the councilors? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Before we get on to item L3, which is a series of resolutions for the bonding of various capital projects that are in the budget previously authorized in the CIP, I just want to... I want to compliment the council. You did follow the process as it exists. You raised some good questions about what you might want to see in the future relative to consideration of outside agencies, but this was lengthy in the conversation. But, the... This is how the process works, and I think we carried it out in a mannered way, and appreciate the outcome, appreciate the dialogue. Thank you. We now move to L3 and the number of items that are there. Clerk, please begin, lead us through the process.
Sure. So, we're taking these off the table, and for action, they were tabled at the last meeting. And we have several bond resolutions, and we need to vote on each one separately. So, with that, we will begin with Resolution R 2025-13, and this is a resolution relating to the appropriation of funds for the fire apparatus replacement program.
Counselor Powers for a motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-13.
Second.
Anybody looking for discussion?
And as a bond item, this will take two-thirds majority, which should be...
Ready?
Yep.
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
And next, we have Resolution R 2025-14, and this is a resolution relating to the appropriation of funds for the Lower Winchester Street reconstruction project.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-14.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Seeing no discussion?
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
And next, we have Resolution R 2025-15, a resolution relating to the appropriation of funds for the roadway preservation and rehabilitation project.
Counselor Powers for a motion?
Move to adopt Resolution 2025-15.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Seeing no discussion? Would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Carries unanimously.
And we have Resolution R 2025-16, and this is a resolution relating to the appropriation of funds for the stormwater resiliency program.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-16.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Seeing no discussion? Would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution R 2025-17, and this is a resolution relating to the appropriation of funds for the Tea Hanger apron maintenance project.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-17.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Motion on the floor, no discussion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
And...
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Getting ahead of myself.
Moving on.
Resolution R 2025-18 is next, and this is a resolution relating to the appropriation of funds for the sewer improvements program.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-18.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Seeing no discussion? Would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
And next, we have Resolution R 2025-19, and this is a resolution relating to the appropriation of funds for the 3-MG water tank repairs.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-19.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Two to go. We have Resolution R 2025-20, and this is a resolution relating to the appropriation of funds for the water distribution improvements program.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-20.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Seeing no discussion?
Sorry. Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one.
All right. Now, we have R 2025-21, and this is a resolution relating to the appropriation of funds for the well field upgrade program.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-21.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Remy. Seeing no discussion?
Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Remy?
Yes.
Counselor Filio?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Favalese?
Yes.
Counselor Lake?
Yes.
Counselor Workman?
Yes.
Counselor Chadborn?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Greenwald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. The council will go into recess. We still have some additional items that we'll come back to, but I'd like to ask if folks could give us some time for a discussion.
Just to clarify, it's a recess to go back to a jury?
Thank you. We are recessing to go into a discussion of collective bargaining agreements.
Before we go, Your Honor, publicly, I just want to applaud the city manager on this year's budget. To put a budget together less than the rate of inflation in this area is an incredible job. On one, that's, you know, not shy at budget time to make my opinions known. This is probably, in my 27 years, it's probably the best budgets ever been put together. My applause to the city manager.
Yes. Hello? Counselor Greenwald?
Bye.
Bye.
I'm leaving you. I'm leaving you. This is non-public.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm surprised that your connection held up as well as it did, as well as you.
I am too. I am too. Goodbye.
Bye.
Enjoy your trip.
Okay.
So, are you... Are you going to stay for this? No, okay.